Thank you, and good evening, and welcome to the Citrus Heights City Council meeting for February 11th, 2021. And with that, would you put the flag up, Amy, and join me in saluting the flags?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Van, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Present.
Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Present.
And Mayor Middle- Miller, sorry. Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Government Affairs Channel. This meeting is livestreamed at www.citrusheights.net. And tonight's meeting will replay on Monday, February—I'm reading this from memory—February 15th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next is approval of agenda.
Remove approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bruins and seconded by Vice Mayor Middleton. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Mr. Schaefer, you want to lead us off this evening?
Sure, sure. So yesterday, I had my meet and greet with the SAC Metro Cable, the administrator and the clerk there. It was very interesting. I didn't realize that the city actually gets paid for the content there. That was really a pleasant surprise. Supposedly—so the city got about $552,000 for 2020, 2021, and I look forward to serving on that board. I also had a meeting with the Residents Against Illegal Fireworks Committee. Jason Lee, the fire marshal for Sacramento, was our guest speaker there. It was very interesting that he brought up some cases in—on July 10th, the city of Manteca arrested nine people for illegal fireworks, all in different instances, and they were—they have an administrative ordinance against fireworks, and fines were levied, and people were arrested. So it's really, really good to see that. The city of Sacramento will be considering similar ordinance in next month. So I look forward to seeing how that turns out. But that's about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Bruins, what do you got first tonight?
Well, I'm going to ask Portia to report on the panel meeting because I was in about 10 minutes, then I had to leave. And so I don't have anything to report on that committee, but that, yeah, that meeting. But we did have a regional sand meeting this week, and just some typical business that we had to attend to. But the important thing is that our district engineer, which is equivalent to the city manager, is retiring this year—later this year. And so I had been selected as one of several board members to serve on a subcommittee to seek a new district engineer upon his retirement. So that will be a big change again in my tenure on that board. This is the fourth time I've served in that capacity. So that's all I have to report on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, sir. Just very happy to see more and more people getting out and more people getting into our restaurants and stuff like that. Very happy, happy to see that the recent court ruling allowing churches to resume indoor services. And so I think that's vital to a lot of people's health, and so hopefully that will pick up again. Hoping to see that there's a big effort to get kids back into school, and hopefully that will happen very quickly. And as we move forward with more vaccinations, getting back to our normal. So I think it's a good time. Get yourselves out, enjoy yourselves, get some air, and let's see how quickly we can get back to what we want to call "normal." That's it.
Thank you, Brett. Vice Mayor Middleton?
Yes, Councilmember Bruins and I attended the panel meeting, and the big takeaway there was the anti-vape grant that the police department got a few months back. And they actually had the devices installed in the restrooms and the areas where they can detect that vape smoke, and they worked really well. And so they're really excited about that. And the new anti-vape truck that rolls around, looking like, you know, one of those things out of one of those monster films, you know, the big wheels, the flashy colors. And they say that they get a lot of positive responses from our youth who ask a lot of questions, and they're really able to educate our youth about, you know, vaping and how that's really bad for their health. And they're also really looking forward to the day when kids are back in school and they're able to open back up and reconnect with our youth and make sure they know that our police department and our program is there to help them, support them.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
All righty. Oh, that means it's my turn. Last Friday morning, Councilmember Schaefer and I attended the Fill the Boot fundraiser kickoff for the Firefighters Burn Institute. And they were on par to set a—I haven't heard how much they made, but they were on par to set a record this year. So we'll see how. Everybody was into giving, and none better than Citrus Heights at Greenback and Sunrise. Yesterday, I had the privilege of touring the new Green Acres Nursery with the city manager Boyd and our economic development team of Megan and Nicole. And unfortunately, they didn't have anything for sale, but they will about mid-March. I understand they're shooting for that as an opening. It could be a little later, but they're not going to miss this spring season, and I think they're going to be a big hit here in Citrus Heights. Now, if you'll bear with me, I'd like to take more than a few moments. Usually, you know, in December, we celebrate everybody's service awards. The city manager makes sure that everybody's commended for their service to the city. I don't know that anybody does that for our city manager, and I'd like to point out that this is Chris's 15th year anniversary with the city of Citrus Heights. I think all you know, we first hired Mr. Boyd as the city's first-ever chief of police. He set up our police department from the ground up. It is nationally recognized for innovative approaches to community policing, technology, and employee leadership development. And from the beginning, the department work resulted in double-digit crime reductions, and the department has also received statewide recognition under Chris's tenure as chief of police. We received back-to-back James Q. Wilson Awards under his leadership, and that's a statewide recognition for innovative approaches to community policing. No other agency in the history of this state has received this award in back-to-back two years in a row. In 2016, Mr. Boyd became just the second city manager, although technically, I think he's the third in Citrus Heights' history. In just his first year as city manager, the city received statewide recognition again with the League of California Cities Helen Putnam Award for Housing Innovations for the city's Homeless Navigator Program. He's undertaken the biggest specific planning and community engagement project in our city's history with the Sunrise Mall and beyond economic development projects. Chris has implemented strategic planning across all departments to encourage fiscal responsibility and resource stewardship. As city manager, he's tackled all challenges we have encountered head-on with courage and determination, and we are accustomed to seeing this from him. Chris, I'd like to thank you for your 15 years of service and everything you've done and to continue to do for the city. We appreciate your tireless devotion and to pursuing the best for Citrus Heights. Thank you for the last 15 years.
You're here. Thank you.
Hey, time certainly does fly by. It's been fantastic. Thanks for those kind words.
Yeah, you're not getting a trophy or anything. We're getting a little cheap around here, but thank you again. And with that, we can move on to the next item.
The next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the Zoom meeting, please use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. And currently, I do not see any raised hands. I do have one written public comment that I will go ahead and read. It states, "Good evening. My name is Jonathan Hawes. I served as El Monte City Clerk from 2013 to 2018. Since 2015, I have been a whistleblower on Andre Quintero and Team El Monte's embezzlement of $10 million from the El Monte Promise Foundation Scholarship Fund. I have interviewed dozens of El Monte residents who have privately confirmed that promised funds were used for fraudulent trips to Vietnam and Haiti, a bogus consultant in Salt Lake City, house repairs, and other criminal activities. I have myself been interviewed by the FBI about two dozen times. Documents proving the embezzlement have been submitted to the FBI and the District Attorney's Office and are now available to the public online. I am asking the Citrus Heights City Council to call out these crimes and protect the vulnerable residents of one of the poorest cities in Southern California. El Monte children who should have been provided with college scholarships were robbed. Andre Quintero and Team El Monte members must go to prison. Thank you." And that concludes the public comment.
All righty, thank you. Let's move on to the consent calendar, please.
The consent calendar, we have items four, five, six, and seven.
Move approval?
I second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Daniels and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. Ms. Van, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller.
Consent calendar passes. Five, zero. On to the next item, please.
The next item is public hearing, item number eight. The subject is updated user fees to adopted master fee schedule, and we will be continuing this item to the April 8th, 2021 city council meeting.
All right. Do you need a motion for that, or isn't properly noticed?
Don't need a motion, but somebody—if we are going to continue it, I do think the mayor should confirm that date, and that way we don't have to renotice it and polish it again.
Well, that's a regular council meeting, so I think I can confirm that. All right, next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number nine. The subject is authorizing the hiring of a retired annuitant for the position of interim Administrative Services Director pursuant to Government Code 21221H, and the recommendation is to approve a resolution appointing William Zanoni as an interim-appointed retired annuitant to the vacant position of Administrative Services Director pursuant to that Government Code section.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Chris Boyd, the city manager. This item before you is considering authorizing the hiring of Mr. Zanoni, who is a retired annuitant for the position of interim Administrative Services Director. The reason really that this item, kind of this rare circumstance, is coming before the council is because Perz has specific rules and regulations about the hiring of retired annuitants. And in this case, in an executive position, the council needs to consider and then ultimately approve a resolution, really certifying these various rules and regulations. This comes on the heels of the recent retirement of the last Assistant City Manager Administrative Services Director, Rhonda Rivera. And the city does have a need to appoint an interim until such time—we can take the time necessary to scope and prepare recruitment and ultimately hire a replacement for the position. At one point, when I became the city manager, we had six departments and six department heads. As of today, we have four departments and two department heads. There is a specific need here to hire this particular annuitant for the duties that are necessary. Mr. Zanoni is highly, highly qualified, extraordinarily experienced, and, you know, he has a lot of experience in running finance departments. He's been a city manager, and most notably, he's worked with us for several years, is very familiar with our Administrative Services Department, particularly on the finance side. You know him. He's testified in front of you a number of times. The real advantage to cities—and this is retired annuitants are—it's very common that cities appoint and utilize annuitants throughout the state of California, particularly in executive positions or positions of special skill—that real advantage is, one, when you have an immediate opening like this, and you need to take the time to evaluate everything that needs to be evaluated before recruiting and hiring a replacement, it's somebody that has a special skill set and an experience that you can plug and play right away. But from a financial side, it's extraordinarily beneficial to the taxpayer and to our budget, because you only pay salary. You do not pay any benefits of any kind. In fact, in this particular case, on an annual basis, in terms of pay rate, we'll be saving approximately $100,000, at least on an annual pay scale, by hiring an annuitant as compared to the person who is in the position right before him. So it really is an advantage across the board. We do need to follow some rules here, including bringing this particular item to council. So Mr. Zanoni will be able to start soon, in the beginning of March. I'm running that department myself until then, as well as I'm running the Public Works Department in addition to being the CEO of the city. So I'll be glad to get him here for sure. So I look forward to that. So with that, council, it's staff's recommendation that the council adopt a resolution appointing Mr. Zanoni, retired annuitant, into the interim position of Administrative Services Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Mr. Boyd from the council?
No, I just want to comment. I think we're very fortunate to have someone of Mr. Zanoni's qualifications, who I've seen around in City Hall for a long time, who understands not only the responsibilities that are going to be facing him, but he also understands our culture. Will fit in very well. So with that, I move that we authorize the hiring of Mr. Zanoni, a retired annuitant, to the position of interim Administrative Services Director.
Pardon me. Mayor, I have a couple of comments before we decide to vote on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'll definitely—and is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion from Bruins and a second from Middleton. Any further discussion? And Tim, I know you have some, so.
Yes, I have some. So how many annuitants did we—have we interviewed for this job, for this position? Okay. So my problem with Mr. Zanoni—and I'm going to go back to the last study session where this table of expenses that we haven't addressed in more than a decade was presented. I think it was a very misleading presentation. I think it was reprisatory for a Measure M not passing, and it really has shaken my trust in the city manager and Mr. Zanoni. So it's no question that I probably—I will definitely be voting no on this. So any further comments, certainly, I will suspend, but that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
I have a few comments. Considering that we are in the middle of having to redo our budget, and we need someone who has been experienced and has worked with the city intimately and knows about, you know, all the difficulties we're facing and the challenges that we have overcome to get this far, Mr. Zanoni seems like an obvious pick until we can find someone to, you know, in the interim, to—we can find someone that can actually fill that position and fit into the culture with the city of Citrus Heights. And I think more importantly is the fact that in the interim, we're saving, you know, $100,000 a year, and we're getting this level of expertise. If I heard city manager Boyd correctly, he—Mr. Zanoni was a previous city manager. Am I correct?
That's right.
Okay. So I think that that's a good—a strong reason why we should really be thinking about supporting this. We need someone that's going to be able to advocate and lead us down the right path. And as for it being more of a reprisal for the lack of Measure M, I sincerely doubt that that's the case. Us as a council, we stand here together to make sure that we're doing the best job we can for the benefit of our community, and retaliation is not something that I have ever seen any of my colleagues participate in, or any anything that I've ever seen Christopher Boyd participate in. So I don't really appreciate the comment.
Thank you, Councilor—Vice Mayor Middleton?
I have a few, Mayor. Brett?
You're muted.
There we go. There we go. I learned a trick. You could use your spacebar, but sometimes that doesn't work. I agree with what Vice Mayor Middleton said. We do know Bill. Bill knows our budget inside and out, and so I have a comfort level bringing him in, especially at this time. I don't quite understand what we're talking about in numbers. I mean, I understand being new, Tim, and not understanding the difference between, you know, looking at 10 years ahead and then actually looking at a two-year budget and deciding not to put—not to purchase software because of the dire fiscal situation we're in. So I really believe we're proceeding as the voters asked us to. They gave us a mandate to tighten our belt and cut costs, and so many are calling for a 10% cut in executive salaries. This is close to a 40% cut. I think it's a good start, and will get us through the worst of times. And so I support this as well. If there's no further comments, I'll call your question.
I have. Steve, hold on just.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Brett.
Thank you. You know, I'm not going to speak to the gentleman. I think he's a very qualified person, but I'm going to speak to the process a little bit. I think we're extremely rushing the matter. It has not been a week since the Assistant City Manager left abruptly. I don't know why she left. And so all of a sudden, now we're going to drop on our lap a replacement right away, and it may be the route to go, but it just seems to be awfully quick. And so there seems to be some unanswered questions, and then there also seems to be maybe even an opportunity to change some of the structure. And so at a time when we're cutting police officers and stuff like that and not filling vacancies, the opportunity to save some money right away, even if it's not on a long-term basis, may be there. The workload is probably tremendous, and I'm not trying to minimize the workload that the city manager has now and the different structure that we've seen over the years with fewer department heads. But I just don't even know that whether there might be a way to do something differently on at least a short-term basis to help us with those budget issues. So it's just a little too quick for me, actually. And it doesn't mean that I wouldn't agree with it at some point. It just seems to be that it was all extremely quick. Her resignation was unanticipated, as far as I know, and as far as anybody else has been able to tell me. And so I think we're just rushing this a little bit, and I would prefer to put it off for a few weeks, but I don't think we'll have that support from the majority of the council. That's it.
Thank you, Brett. If I could answer your first question on the retirement, I'm sure it was a personal decision. It's none of my business. It's none of your business. It's none of anybody's business. She made the decision. And secondly, I'd say to the hiring, the city council doesn't do the hiring and the firing. I mean, we only—two positions, city manager, and we have a say in the city attorney. Otherwise, we delegate to the city manager to run this city. And I—again, I think it's a good choice, but that's not what we're here for. We're here to authorize the—pay for a retired annuitant per the CalPERS rules. Again, the decision, and I appreciate it. You can criticize all you want, but I think this is a good move at the right time. So with that, now I'll call for the question. Would you please call a roll, Amy?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller.
And that motion carries 3-2. Next item, please, Amy.
Next item is department reports, and I don't believe we have any. The next item is city manager items.
Yes, council, I do have one. In looking at our long-range calendar and consulting with staff for the next council meeting, which I believe is February the 25th, we were able to—we just had a few items. We were able to actually move back, and also mindful that the council will be undergoing another two-hour training that night from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. is my recommendation that we cancel the regular council meeting on the 25th.
Just a question, Chris, real quick. What is that training?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, we've had enough training the council has, but this one now is an ethics training. AB 1234 requires training, Brown Act, Public Records Act. It's a different slant than the harassment training, but it is required every two years. So once we do that, we won't have to do it for a few more years.
Is that something that we could put off to connect to another city council meeting? If we're not going to have the city council meeting, I just—I don't know. It just seems like we could move it to another day when we're going to have a city council meeting.
I think it's based on when we last have it. And so the city clerk had informed me. I think we're coming due on those two years, and so that's why originally it was going to be done in like January, February timeframe, but we pushed it back just because that was a better available time slot. So I think that's the push for that timeframe in—at the next meeting.
Okay.
See, I've got a notice from all the county boards I sit on that it was due January 31st. I keep getting letters from the Sacramento County Compliance Officer, whoever that is. And so I was getting a little nervous that it was actually going so late in the year.
So since we're not going to have a council meeting that night, we could just have that other training pretty much anytime, right?
Well, technically, yes. As was mentioned, we need to do it sooner than later to make sure the council and the commissions are in compliance. If it's the council's desire, I find a different date other than the 25th is scheduled. I'd be happy to work on that and coordinate with the five of you.
Just, yeah. It was just a thought. I don't—I'm looking at my—I'd like to do it sooner rather than later, and looking—I don't—there's no other time where it backs up to anything else the city's doing. So I guess it really doesn't matter, just whether we keep it that time or not, so.
And is it true that we can—I've never done this. I've always taken the city's classes, but aren't these offered online, and you can get the same certification?
Yes, the FPPC website does have a link that you can do it, and that is—that's an alternative. I would like to think that the quality of the instruction isn't quite as good as doing it live or virtually, but that is—if you're worried about— But that is, if you're worried about coming due on your time, you could certainly go on the FPPC website and take the 1234 training there.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't know any difference, so I guess I'll be doing it twice.
But you don't have to do it twice if you've already done the ethics training with FPPC.
I'll think about it. Ryan's kind of interesting.
Okay.
So what's the council's pleasure? I mean, if we, would you like me to try to find, I mean, we're talking two weeks from now, something sooner? Do you like the five to seven? Do you want to take it on your own, which is obviously not our preference? But as the city attorney pointed out, I think it is, and I'm hearing an option.
Well, I think an opportunity to be home with our families, if we could, is great. So anytime we could do that, that would be great. But I'll be there whatever the council decides.
Anybody else?
Available during the daytime? I'm okay with it for that time, but if it, if it's, if there's an opportunity to do it during the day, that might be something, too. Is it mainly the council and the commission that has to take it?
Yes, this one is not much for supervisors, most for elected officials and the appointees.
Okay. Well, it's not complicated. Let's just leave it where it is. I'm okay with that.
I, I'm inclined to agree with that, Brett. I understand. This does take away time from the family. So if you need to self-certify, go for it. And let's keep that date. Was that all the items, Chris?
Yes, sir. I believe, Amy, I should ask you.
No, I mean for you.
Oh, yeah. It is for me. Yes, it is for me. Thank you.
We can move on to a different item.
And the last item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anybody?
Nope, not for me.
Okay, so not hearing any. I think it's time to adjourn the meeting. Gavel bang, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.